So, we can get started because we're getting a little bit of a late start. I was handing out some materials. Are we ready to go over there? Everybody ready? Okay. So, welcome to the, one of the two monthly meetings for the MCPS Board of Trustees. There is an agenda, and so we'll be talking about the agenda under item number three. So, item number one on the agenda is a call to order, which I've just called this meeting to order. And welcome, everybody who is here and roll call. And so, the trustees who are missing are Trustee Newbold, who's in trial, Trustee Smith, who has out-of-town guests, Trustee Kendall, who's traveling, and Trustee Brigstad, who's stuck in Stevensville, and Trustee McDonald's going to be late, but she's on her way. And so, the rest of the trustees are here. And we do have a quorum. We have six trustees present. And so, now, we move on to item number two, which is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbedridden, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. And so, now, we move on to item number three, which is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. And so, there are two revisions to the agenda. One is under eight, new business, A2, which the topic was to convey Willard School property. And there is some additional legal review that needs to be done concerning the kind of background paperwork on that. So, we're going to table that until that additional review is done. So, we will deal with that at a later time. And then, number 10 is, it's listed as an grievance hearing in executive session. And apologies to all present, but I was traveling in Alaska last week, and so, in an abundance of caution, the administrative staff set it on as being held in executive session, because they saw the word grievance. But since I'm the board chair and I'm the only one who can declare whether the public's right to know is outweighed by someone's right to privacy, once I got back and got to read the materials, I got in last night and I read them today, and I cannot determine that there is a privacy interest that outweighs the public's right to know, so that will be not in executive session, but in public session instead. And so, with those two changes, does anyone else have any requests to revise or de-agenda? I don't have to look that way this time. Seeing none, then with those revisions, we'll go ahead. So, the next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the Board of Trustees' regular meeting from May 23, 2017, that begin on page four. First, are there any corrections or additions, or spelling errors, or whatever? Seeing that no one is indicating such, then is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 23, 2017? Moved by Trustee Wake. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Duggar. All those, I'm sorry, I'm so used to having trustees on the side of the table, I'm looking that way for no purpose. All those in favor of approving the minutes from May 23 regular board meeting, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Now, we move on to five, which is public comment and also written comments. We've received some correspondence, which is found on page 19. And so, public comment at this time is on non-agenda items. It's public comment on items that haven't been noticed up for the board either to review or discuss, but is something that anyone in the public wants to bring to the board's attention, so that if it needs further merit or review. So, there won't be any discussion by the board tonight, because under the Open Meeting Act, we have to give notice that we're going to be discussing it. So, but we'd love to hear from anyone in the public about any items that you would like us to know about. And so, if you have an unusual spelling of your first or last name, if you can spell it for Elizabeth, our recorder, or secretary, I guess, and if you represent an organization, if you can identify that organization, and if you can press the little button so the light turns red.
Great. Well, thank you so much, esteemed trustees. I thank you for being here this evening. My name is Helen Jenkins, and I'm a neighbor of the Willard School, as well as the vice-chair of the city council, I'm sorry, city planning board for Missoula. And I'm here to express some concerns over the current site plan for the Willard School. I understand you have other Willard business later in the agenda, but I wanted to bring up site plan issues, since the district just submitted their plans to the Board of Adjustment. And I've passed out some copies of the site plans, so if there aren't enough, please share. So, first and foremost, I'd like to draw your attention to the current site plan for the new Willard School. This is the most recent version, again, submitted to the Board of Adjustment this week. And this plan includes, as you will notice, a parking lot, and that parking lot contains 43 parking spots, down from the originally proposed 45 parking spots. You will oftentimes hear that this 43 number is actually down from the 65 current parking spots found at the school today. What you won't hear, however, is that we can never again recreate the parking lot that now exists because of city land use regulations. So, really, we're back to the 45 parking spots of the district originally proposed, and the neighborhood is fighting. As someone that lives next to the school and shares the same streets as the students and interacts with these students and teachers, I'm here today to tell you that Willard doesn't need a parking lot to accommodate more than 30 cars. It doesn't need 65, it doesn't need 45, it doesn't need 43 or 41, it needs a maximum of 30. We have done a census of the current parking lot, and at no time has that lot ever held more than 26 cars on a regular school day. On graduation, the one day when the lot was actually full, the entirety of Crosby Street, which you'll see runs along, parallel to the park next to the school, was completely empty. That street on both sides holds 40 parked cars, parallel parked cars. And it's, and that measurement's only been taken from alley to alley without even going deeper into the neighborhood or anywhere else near the planned bus stop. So, what the district is proposing is to cut the park behind Willard, known as Sunset Memorial Park, to extend a parking lot. As a neighbor and as someone that works on city planning issues, I can't tell you how heartbreaking it is to see the district propose a terrible land use design and then fight the neighborhood at every turn just to lay down asphalt. That will remain completely empty every day after 3:00 p.m., on the weekends, and during the entire summer, as it is today. It seems like a terrible way for the school district to expend its political capital with the very same community that happily supported the school bond and who's ultimately paying for the new school. So, I urge you today to make an amendment to the site plan that was submitted to the Board of Adjustment to reflect the neighborhood's strong desire to build a parking lot with 30 spaces max for the new Willard School. Finally, I'd like to talk about the process for community engagement generally with Willard. As I mentioned, I'm on the city-county planning board, and we hold public hearings for development projects twice a month. Never in my three years of being on the board have I come across a more contradicting and disingenuous developer, the school district. I began looking for involvement before the bond passed and was told by Mark Thane at that time that there would be plenty of community involvement closer to the date when Willard was scheduled to be discussed. So, I waited. I met with Nick Salmon at CTA Architects and discussed possible designs for Willard. I waited some more. I waited until January of this year to find out that the EIT meetings, or Education Innovation Team meetings, were being held to discuss the interior needs of the school. Knowing this, I attended a few of these meetings and encouraged the architects to involve the neighborhood as quickly as possible, as decisions were being made that would affect the entire neighborhood, and I felt that they needed a larger audience. I also met individually with current CTA team members to talk about the parking and the school design. Later, I suggested and helped coordinate a neighborhood leadership meeting with CTA, Mark Thane, and others in May. At that point, that group gathered together and expressed concerns about the amount of parking. Again, the school district talked about how there would be ample time for more public input. Alarmed that the school district wanted to have all of the development plans submitted to the city by August 1st, with virtually no public involvement, I began to organize my neighbors for the public meeting that was requested for June 29th. At that meeting, we had great turnout and press, and our neighborhood banded together and agreed that a smaller parking lot was necessary. We also agreed that there was more than enough street parking. 30 parking spots is all that is necessary. This was the first time most of the neighbors had even heard that the school was being torn down. Most agreed that major demolition of a historical building needed more public involvement. Our questions and concerns were met with general condescension and head nodding, and throughout this process, many of us have felt personally insulted and demeaned by the school district. As Mary Laporte said, she's chair of the Riverfront Leadership Council, this process has been a disgrace. In an effort to make sure that this type of disconnect does not happen in the future, I encourage you to do the following, to engage neighborhoods moving forward. Number one, the moment a bond passes, a project is proposed, or a major construction event is happening, reach out to city council members, whose words are being affected, as well as the neighborhood leadership teams, and encourage them to put together a task force to provide and gather feedback for the project. For Willard, all of this grief and disappointment and anxiety around this project, that this project has created, could have been avoided if back in January, Mr. Thane had reached out to our neighborhood groups and given us some parameters to work within, and asked us to provide feedback by the time the interior of the school had been completed. So, we could have had two kind of concurring task forces, task forces working on this. It's not complicated. Secondly, when holding a public meeting in the neighborhood to discuss projects, please take minutes, record it, or otherwise keep track of the dialogue. This really helps to prevent misinformation, and it continues, and it will help to build public trust in the process. And three, establish a timeline that is transparent for the entirety of the process. At the Willard Community Meeting in June, when we asked about a timeline, we were met with a condescending reply, "This meeting was internally scheduled, even if you didn't know about it." How is that helpful to a concerned neighbor? I'll wrap up by saying that the entire neighborhood is supportive and proud of the Willard School and its students. The school district has treated the Rose Park and the Riverfront Neighborhoods with grave disrespect, and I hope that you will heed our request for a smaller parking lot and address our concerns. This isn't about me or my family. It's about a park that should remain unobstructed for the enjoyment of all, and a process that has broken down the trust that we citizens have placed in our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Hello. I'm Brian Jenkins, also a neighbor, live right across the street from the Willard School. And I've sent a couple emails. Thanks for responding to those, Mr. Thane. And I would appreciate if those could go into comment as well, if that's possible. So, I have a little written statement here, but so, first, again, I'd like to, I need to bring up the process in regard to the Willard Site Plan. As someone who voted for the school bond and will always do what I can as a taxpayer to ensure that my community has the best possible public education, I have been appalled by this so-called process. We all love our neighbor, the Willard School. Outside of the cigarette butts that we all deal with, we couldn't ask for a better neighbor. This is partially why we feel so disappointed in the way that the school district has been communicating or not communicating with the neighborhood. For example, when I talked to my neighbors on the day of the June 19 meeting, not a single one of them knew the school was being demolished. That's poor outreach. When I shared with them the new plan that I only had from taking a picture with my phone at the EIT meeting, they were shocked that the process had come so far without their knowledge. That's not outreach. There were no signs on the doors of the school. I personally had to laminate the plans and put them up around the park, go door-to-door. I was the outreach. My wife and I were the outreach. That's a bummer. I've asked many, many times now, what is the cost of getting the current building and adding on to it, and compared to the cost of a new build? A versus B? Looking for two numbers. No one seems to be willing to answer that question. I've asked several of you sitting here today. Though I appreciate you sending out that email, Hatton, after the last meeting on the That was a lot of brochures, and there was a spreadsheet. I don't know what that is. I tried, I really did, and what I'm looking for is A versus B. That's what the whole neighborhood is looking for. Included in that was how teachers can work better together as a team. It doesn't seem like an answer to A versus B. Sorry. Anyway, so yes, the neighborhood has some very direct questions, and we're not getting any direct answers. I appreciate the meeting that was scheduled for the 19th, that was lately, scheduled late for the 19th, that again, there was no outreach on, there was no communication to the neighborhood. My wife and I did all of that, and that is why we moved back from the big city. We moved back to Montana to be a part of the community, to feel like we had, say, what was happening at the park across the street from our house. And we have not felt that way, and that is, it's hurtful. So, now, when I look back at the notes from the June 19 meeting, it jumps out to me that Tony Houck, I don't know if I'm pronouncing his last name correctly, noted that the building should last, this new building should last for around 60 years, 60-plus years is what he said. Well, this school we have right now has lasted 100 years. 60-plus years? That's just in time for me to watch a second Willard School get torn down in my lifetime. So, is that the culture we want in Missoula? Is that a throwaway culture that we're going to institute with the school district? Is that what we want to teach these students? I hope my school bond vote would go towards teaching the next generation to fix problems and celebrate our past. I'm well aware at this point that there's no intention from your end to save the old Willard Building. But I would like to share a quote from the Building Hysterosity Architectural Sensitivity Recommendations that this same school district had the foresight to pay for in 1995. This is a document that I'm hoping that all of you referenced when making this decision. Should be in your desks. It reads, "In regards to venerable old buildings, new work should emulate the original." If you've seen the design, it's modern, there are no gables, it doesn't emulate the original Willard at all. Again, we're not, we agree that it's, education is most paramount, especially at this school, this alternative high school, and we love being neighbors of this school. But we also love being part of the community, it's why we're here. And when I've approached members involving the so-called process, I've been treated with condescension and largely ignored, until recently, starting to get more attention. This is a neighborhood that we have every right to ask questions in regards to what's happening with our neighbors, and we have every right to get direct answers from you guys. Again, I'm not special, this isn't just me, this is the tone of the entire neighborhood. Everyone that I speak to at that park every day, which is a lot of people, four daycares today use that park just for activities. This is an area that they were on that will be blacktop if we continue this process this way. For, this was before lunch, and countless dogs. I just, I would ask you all to come out and spend some time at the park in the evening. You'll see so many people. At lunch, you'll see so many people, and their voice, I'm mirroring their tone. Thanks for your time.
Thanks. Is there any more public comment on non-agenda items?
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot to say. I want to say, first of all, my neighbors speak for me largely. I grew up in a family of teachers, and I have some understanding and appreciation of the difficulty that administrators have in administering, in balancing all the needs. There's a lot of them, everything from asbestos remediation to Americans for Disability Act, and it's an incredible task, and I appreciate very much any public servant who takes the time. It's difficult, and I appreciate my neighbors for taking the time to call my attention to something that, as they say, "I had no reason to be aware of this." It is easy for us to wait for you to come to us. We need that. When my neighbors came to you, it wasn't working. Personally, I've had a daughter in Willard School. My first meeting there was 40 years ago. Irene Hiller was on the school board. We had dime-a-dip dinners. And I'm kind of a freak for green and old things. Don't tear it down if you can make it work kind of a person. You've got a good foundation and four good walls. But you've got decisions you have to make based on a lot of things that I don't understand, and I appreciate that. But do, please, take the time from here forward to involve us. I have an appointment with you tomorrow. I don't need to be there. Thank you. At 10:30, you're free. Thank you all.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Hi, my name's Pam Sheemer, and I'm a neighbor of Willard School as well. And I just wanted to say that some of my concerns are obviously the same as what my neighbors say, and I'm really thankful for Brian to kind of be our leader and has involved, gotten us involved, and let us know what is going on. My two concerns are green space and a building that fits in with the neighborhood. I would like to see Willard saved. I know that train may have left the station already, but that decision was, what I was told was decided pre-bond, and I don't think there was any public involvement in the pre-bond that I know of. And I would like to know if there was an engineer involved in saying that the building could be or could not be reused. I would like to see Willard stay, but if you can't keep Willard, I think one of the issues that might, or one of the things that could solve some of the issues of parking and also the access off of Sixth Street, having cars slow down off of Sixth and pull into that parking lot, which a lot of people are concerned because they're talking about making Sixth Street a one-lane road with a bike lane. If you can't keep Willard, maybe consider building this new school where the old Willard School is, keeping the parking where it is, and maybe bringing the kids over here to the old Missoula College for that school year, so that that new building could be built after they tear the old one down. And, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Hi, I'm Glenn Moffett. I'm currently a teacher at Paxton Elementary, and I've taught in the district for quite some time, starting in 1991. And part of my job was being an alternative education teacher in the district, and got to start the first school within a school, alternative education program at CS Porter Middle School for middle school kids. And it was a really interesting deal, and I kind of want to address a little bit about the alternative ed kind of kids and some of the difficulties you have trying to educate kids that are maybe struggling in different ways, maybe coming from a whole different angle on life, and then also, some of the struggles you might have just with getting those kind of kids to be active. It's tough business. It's tough education business, and trying to bring out a sense of activity and promote activity with kids that have that alternative perspective, they are, it's not an easy thing to do. The one thing I noticed in middle school teaching with alternative education kids, and I would talk to administration over and over and over, you can't give me too many kids at one time. When I'm working with kids, I can get up to a certain number. When I go over that number, the behavior starts to drop, and then every kid added on, it seems like it's more of an exponential decline. So, I'd be concerned if Willard went to 250 kids, and what that would do, if you could bring on enough staff, if you'd have the space, if you keep that student-teacher ratio at a certain point, because that's a big deal. It's tough business, and those people that are educating those kids over there, they're doing tough work. And the other thing is, when you try to teach them physical education, or you try to get some sense of fitness, with some kids that are maybe more interested in going and having a smoke, it's tough business, just like teaching them in the classroom. And I think outdoor space means a lot, and keeping some of that green space not only to our neighborhood, but I think it also, once it's gone, it's gone. I think it's a big deal for who, down the road, for those people that are going to try to teach physical education and health to those children, and physical education and health to those kids is a big, big issue. I think health education is really interesting, and it's something that can level the playing field for kids that maybe come from lower socioeconomic backgrounds, and it's something that we need to really consider district-wide as being very important. But for those kind of kids, I think it's extremely important, but so is physical education. And so, I was looking at the building. The building, to me, is beautiful. So, if you walk around that building, you take off those fire escapes on the back and knock that old shed down that somebody attached to it years ago. The brickwork on that is phenomenal. It is beautiful, and it's a three-story building. Somebody did some incredible inlay work into that building. It's not going to be a thing that you really want to knock down unless you have to. It's also creates a little bit of an option for doing more alternative kind of fitness things with those kids, maybe a great rock climbing wall, which I happen to have the luxury of having at my school, and it's a phenomenal piece. And if you're working with kids in low student-to-teacher ratios, you can really have some fun with that and do some great work, and that's the kind of thing I think alternative ed kids kind of want to do. So, I'm kind of putting a plug in for, the building itself kind of lends itself to creating something like that. But above and beyond that, the neighborhood, the type of things that are going on all summer there, so I've seen several soccer groups come in. There was a group rode in on a, just a massive, I've heard of them, on bicycles, and they broke out and played ultimate frisbee. They're playing the whole length-wise, they're not playing width-wise. Lacrosse teams from all over this city use it. It is a little, small space that really, really gets used. It's phenomenal to be in that community and to watch all the people, adult kickball. There's all sorts of fun stuff that's really positive element to a neighborhood. So, I'd like you to consider some of those things, and then I'd also like you to consider that once you mow something down, once you pave something over, I think you really, you know, you're not getting it back. So, it's a tough, tough deal for us to face. And so, I hope you consider the building, keeping it. I hope you consider if it can be kept, but you take the time to really hammer through the plans and work with the community. That's what I'm here for today. So, thank you very much, and I'm very respectful of all the work you do too, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, then we'll move back to the agenda, which is item 6A, which is the Insurance Trust Fund Report. It's found on page 22. This is the Routine Health Insurance Trust Fund Report for the month of May 2017. We see this report every month, and so, it's here for information purposes. Then we move on to 6B, which is announcements from Superintendent Thane.
Thank you. Calendar items are found on page 23 in the packet, and I would highlight just a few. We have transitioned to summer hours, which means we're working four 10-hour days, Monday through Thursday, and district offices are open 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We will be closed in observance of Independence Day, Tuesday, July 4. We're scheduled for our next regular board meeting, Tuesday, July 11, at 6:00 p.m. in this room. We had previously listed the Tuesday, July 25 board meeting as tentative, and we would move to cancel that meeting at this point in time, so we'll relieve your calendars of the 25th. Our first regular board meeting in August is scheduled for Tuesday, August 8, at 6:00 p.m. And then, an addition that's not noted on the calendar, as we move into budget adoption season, we will be requesting a special board meeting Thursday, August 17, at 6:00 p.m. in this room. The purpose is to address the fiscal year 2018 budget. Statute requires that we convene that meeting prior to August 20, so it does not work with our normally scheduled second board meeting. I would also just like to take a moment at this time to mention to you that we're fully engaged here at the Business Building in wrapping up the fiscal year, and I know trustees previously had conversation about the inter-local agreement that has been included in the budget for a number of years, and that's really been an accounting move to help us reconcile those two budgets. And because of some savings in utilities and some other items this year, I just want to inform the trustees, we will not be utilizing any of the inter-local agreement that was included in the fiscal year 2017 budget. With that, I appreciate your time tonight.
Thanks. Now, whoops. Now, we move on to 6C, which are announcements from trustees. Do any trustees have any announcements? Seeing no one leaping forward, then we'll move on to seven, which is the Consent Agenda. This is a mechanism allowed under our bylaws to deal with routine perfunctory matters that we see every month, which are non-controversial, and anytime any trustee, even when a single trustee, can ask that something come off the consent agenda if they want to have a further discussion. But if it's on the consent agenda, then the board members will not be discussing the item, or items, this month it's only one, and, but the public still is allowed the opportunity for public comment. So, the single item on this month's consent agenda is the revenue and expenditure reports from May 2017, and this is something that we see as is indicated on a regular basis. And so, is there a motion to approve the attached revenue And so is there a motion to approve the attached revenues and expenditure reports from May 2017, moved by trustee Wake, gets seconded by trustee Lorenzen. As I indicated, we won't be discussing it, but is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the attached revenue and expenditures report for May 2017, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's all trustees present. Elizabeth and trustee McDonald is here now. Then we move on to 8A, and superintendent Thane indicated I can jump straight to you, Burley. So it looks like you're going to give us some updates about what's going on with things in the district.
Yeah, so I'll kind of be real quick, real quick with what's going on this summer. We had a really neat, short, quick groundbreaking ceremony at Gold Springs on Monday, which went very well. There was a lot of staff and students there, and I'm sure it was on the news. I didn't watch it, but I'm sure it was on the news. There's a lot of media there. So that was great. And then we should see some permitting come through for Gold Springs to begin work probably around mid-July. Right now, we're going through an annexation process, and it's went through some subcommittees and been approved, and it'll go to the City Council, I believe. I believe it's on the 12th of July or 13th of July. So as soon as they approve that, the permits should start to come out pretty quickly after that, and we should see some extensive work occurring, probably mid-July-July. Russell and Washington and Willard are all scheduled to begin construction at the end of August and into September. So there's some permitting processes going through right now, some Board of Adjustment stuff, a lot of information seeking and getting all the ducks in a row to get that, the groundbreaking process going. So we'll see a lot of that happen towards the end of August and beginning of September. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions if you guys have anything else.
Any questions, trustee Lorenzen?
Well, I guess I have a question, and I know it's a big one, and it's really not Burley's. If we got the impression we had gone too fast into Willard, is it too late to take another year on Willard and make sure that everybody gets on board?
Well, can I ask a related question, just because I'm curious? So we were handed out a little site plan that looks like it's been submitted to the Board of Adjustments on the 21st. And if I'm looking at it correctly, the entire green space that exists at Willard is maintained at Willard, and it adds in a multi-sport court and adds in gardens. And so are we losing any of the green space that is currently at Willard? That seemed to be a concern.
There is a little bit of green space. I don't know the exact square footage, but there is, there is some green space that would be going away. You would lose some of it on the multi-sport court, maybe a sliver of it on the building. And again, I'm not exactly sure how far that parking lot comes out, but there is some green space that would go away. We reduce that probably by half when we reduce the parking from the 45 to 43. You basically took out another row, but there are city requirements as far as islands and how many islands we have to have in there, that kind of thing. So we, but it did shrink by probably half of what you see. It probably came out, you know, past that triangle, that line there, it came out past that before we redid this. But it's really not, we didn't feel like it was a lot, but, I mean, the community spoke very adamantly at that meeting that we wanted to see more green space, and we felt like we decreased that by quite a bit. And parking is, you know, it's, different things happen this time of year when you do parking. You have kids, different means of transportation. We had a lot of kids graduate early, so enrollment was down a little bit towards the end of the year when there was some car counting going on. We have, you know, we're building the site to have up over 200 kids, and if we ever did have that many kids, not saying that we would have that many kids, we want to make sure that we're parking in our parking lot. If we, there's one thing we face at the school district more than anything, is that we don't have parking at any of our sites outside of our high schools, our two urban high schools. And it's interesting, because most of our, almost every single project we've had up to this one, to Willard, was, we need more parking, we need more parking, we need more parking. And so this was kind of a different, different information we received from the community. So, and as stated earlier, it was, it did start at 65 parking lot, parking spaces. We currently have about 50, and so we'll even be less than what we had before. So I guess that was a long-winded answer to the green space question.
I would just respond to trustee Lorenzen's question with a couple of points. The first being that the bond language was very clear that we would build a new Willard Alternative High School. The idea that we would go back now and save the facility after the voters had all passed the bond, that train left the station 18 months ago, quite honestly, and that was discussed at that time, very clearly that we would build a new facility for Willard. With regard to the site plan specifically, if you look at the map that's in front of you, and if you were to look at the eastern border of the parking lot, in the original plans, you could extend that line down essentially on that triangle. And this, this area that I'm showing was consumed with basketball court and extensions of parking. And at the May public meeting that we had at Willard, we heard, at least I heard very clearly, that this vacated alleyway that's represented by the two parallel lines at the top of the triangle, that that was, in essence, the dividing line that we heard with regard to green space. Those in attendance in May said they did not want the school site development plan to encroach beyond that alleyway. And we've gone back to the architects, they reduced the size of the basketball court, relocated it, reduced the size of the parking lot so that we would preserve all the green space, which is located to the south of the vacated alleyway. So again, I think that public comment was heard very clearly and was addressed. So, you know, we have certainly a lot invested right now with professional services that have designed and engineered the new facility, and I think it would be counter to our best interests to slow the project down for a year. My personal opinion.
Another question, I guess, Burley, since you're the maintenance guy, too. Do we ever build parking lots that aren't asphalted? Say we deliberately build a gravel parking lot? Do we ever do that anymore?
No, we haven't. We haven't done that for quite some time, and there was some of a gravel parking lot at our Dama Dickinson at one time, but it was asphalted over as well within the last eight years, nine years. But, you know, the, Willard is, hasn't been a healthy building probably for 30, 40, maybe even longer than that, years. So it's a building that was, I believe, shut down by the district at one time and reopened, and it's, it was quite clear during the process of, before the bond, there was, there was public meetings. I know Jane Bennett went to many of the, thank you, the Neighborhood Council meetings and discussed what was going to happen with Willard and what we were proposing to do. Whether or not it didn't get out good enough or not, I don't know. But, you know, the process we have with this is, and I know Mark even addressed the Neighborhood councils over the last six months or so, a couple of times. So our process with most of these facilities have been, once we get up, you know, with the EITs, we get up to a kind of the end of the schematic design, and we're kind of talking about the design development, where we start talking about materials, and we're going to general contractor on, and we really haven't done much with the inside. You know, we're not, we have things kind of outlined in boxes, but we don't have any high detail to it. That's when we bring in the community. We've done it in every single of our projects, and we show them kind of what we have, and it's, sorry, it's even, typically, it's right around the same time as when we bring it to the board. We'd like to bring it to the board within that same timeframe. So it's typically what you guys see as well, and it's not, you know, real detailed, it's more just kind of an example of what's going to happen. And things have changed through that process as well. I know with Rattlesnake, the process, the whole entry, the main entry got changed based off public comment. So we do take those into consideration very seriously, and things have been changed within a lot of our projects with those comments.
Just one sort of fiddly question, one kind of historical question.
The Willard building is not actually the original building that was on that site in the first place, correct? So it was actually a replacement building itself? And any idea how long the first one stood? Anybody? I'll go do some Googling.
I think it was built in 1898, if I'm not mistaken.
The original one, yeah.
Yeah, the original.
And the one that's there now was built as an elementary school?
Correct.
And has really been kind of gerrigued, as it were, for many, many years already, let alone kind of crumbling. Just, I think that's, I didn't, I wasn't aware of the replacement building aspect till recently myself. The other technical question is, does the city have a requirement on how many parking spaces we're required to have, based on the number of people who are going to be using the facility? Is that something we have control over and could go even smaller? Or is that something the city requires us to have a certain number of spots?
There is a requirement. I believe high schools are one space for every five students and one space for every staff member. However, that's what the Board of Adjustments are for. So the city does allow some leniency and some, and, you know, you kind of propose them what they want, and then they kind of go through a public process with the Board of Adjustments. And so there is ways to eliminate that, because if you look at our sites, you know, Washington, Lowell, Hellgate, and you probably go through about five more, that we would never meet that requirement. So we have to go to the Board of Adjustments for almost every project we've had thus far to get those approved, to have reduced parking to make it work.
Well, I guess what I'm concerned with is that they, the people who are here tonight were showing concern about how the building would look, and because the neighborhood there is very cozy, is that a, is that the right word or not? And they did mention the fact that they had problems with the students dropping their cigarette butts every place. So what could be a small potential that they would overlook at this point in time? Maybe something that they won't look on the long run because of the fact that their neighborhood is changing? So we have to make, I guess I would like to see them more incorporated in how we, how the building looks on the outside, just maybe we can soften it a little bit? I don't know. I mean, I understand that we've expended a lot of money, but yet they are, I don't want to see them, us being looked at as being antagonistic. We have to go out there and make sure that we're not in that position. That's all I got to say.
Any other trustee questions? I have one just based on Grace. So I think if I remember right, we're just, I mean, the proposal is to build on the original Willard site, so we're just putting Willard back to where it started out. Is that right?
Yeah, it's on the current site, but, so if you look at the, if you look at the site plan you have here, the current site, the current building sits on where that parking lot is now, along Sixth Street. So it comes out, it starts, it's really close to Ash Street, and it comes out to probably where you see the main entry word there. And so that's where it sits now, so it's just going to be moved to the west and come to the south. So it's just basically going where the parking lot's currently at.
And can I ask one more? Do you want to ask first, and then I'll ask one?
I guess just to get at all the table. So the history, do you understand, is this your opinion, Burley? That originally Paxton was the same building that Willard is now. Paxton was torn down and replaced with its current building in 1991, '23-ish? And Whittier is the same building that Willard is now. But Whittier is used for head-startsized children, and Willard's being used for high schoolers. Is that accurate? Okay, thanks.
That's correct.
I guess just one final question, just the second part of trustee Decker's question. So do we have options when we're putting in the parking lot? I mean, parking lots nowadays sometimes have some trees and some decorative items so that it's not, I mean, right now, Willard's parking lot that the neighbors are currently looking at is honestly pretty depressing, and there's bars on all the windows from kickballs when it was an elementary school. And, I mean, that parking lot side currently looks, it's a little sad-looking. So is there any option to making, I mean, if we have the funds available to making a parking lot look more attractive than the current parking lot looks?
Yeah, absolutely. There's actually city requirements on number of trees and that kind of thing as well. So there'll be definitely some landscaping, and will look much more pleasant than it does now, for sure.
Any other questions? Anybody else?
There was, I'm sorry, can I chime in real quick? There was also a lot of talk with that basketball court on how we can move things differently, because it was taking up some of that green space. So, you know, we brainstormed a lot of things, and not that this is really the conclusion, but just kind of tell you the step process we went through with the community. And, you know, one process, one conversation was about putting that hard space as a dual-purpose parking lot slash hard space. Didn't quite work out real well, but it was talked about a lot, mainly because if you have staff parking there during the day, then it doesn't help out with PE classes, that kind of thing. So, but there was a lot of talk about that parking lot, a lot of talk about the site plan, and we will continue to talk about it.
And this is information only, but are there any public comment on any of the bond projects that are going on? Seeing none, then we have tabled A2 until we get some additional legal review done. So moving on to 8A3, which is the preliminary bond sale timeline for a second issuance, and this is information only at this time, correct? And so Pat, if you can walk us through what we're being informed about.
You bet. So we were originally contemplating the second bond issue in the November timeframe. Well, originally, it was January of 18, and then on an early side, maybe moving it up to November, and now we're talking about moving it up two more months to September. And part of the rationale for doing so is to take advantage of interest rates which are hanging in there, and hopefully will be decent by the time we do the bond issue. Also, the, this involves moving projects up, and we're moving our projects along. To this point, it has the goal or the effect of eliminating or reducing escalation charges. So actually, by moving projects to this point and having done a pretty good job of getting projects out the door, we're able to then plan for this next round of projects. And so our construction managers are on board with that and with the timeframe that that entails, since we need to encumber or expand 85% of these bond, these bond proceeds within a three-year timeframe. So it does compress the time period, but we're in good shape with the first bond issue. So we also have the ability to perform, which is a key factor, of course. Page 36 is the timeframe. This is the preliminary financing time schedule. It takes some time to get to that September bond issue. And so tonight, we're just showing you what the timetable would look like, really from this point to July. There's some information gathering that would happen, but the July is the kickoff with the resolution, which is found on the succeeding pages, being on page 37. And these are draft resolutions, authorizing resolutions that the board would look at on July 11th. And the intervening time after the resolution is really developing information, pulling information together, preparing the preliminary official statement, which is essentially what's used to provide to investors to make investment decisions. We engage Moody's in a rating call, which was also used for investors, and then get into the public offering of the bonds, as you'll see on the timetable. So really, this is hopefully an opportunity for the district to realize some decent interest rates on a second bond issue, and it's good we're in a position that we're able to do this.
Any questions for Pat? I have one, kind of maybe naive, but it appears that around the country primarily, there are some places where bonds aren't going so well, like Illinois is having problems, and their bonds are probably not incredibly valuable, and Puerto Rico is having problems. So is a place like Montana more valuable because we've been a pretty steady state in terms of return on investment for bonds?
Yeah, great question. It has been very steady, so we're very desirable bonds. And so when Superintendent Thane and I met with DA Davidson here a couple of weeks ago, it was a point he made, is that Montana bonds have a very good track record, and that we have, for sales and for positive sales and marketing of these bonds. So we did- So we did well the first go around in that regard and, and hopefully, and, and he's anticipating we'd do well again. Yeah, thank you.
Any other question, trustee Decker?
Just maybe to refresh my memory and let folks know, what happens if we don't get everything under contract in three years?
Yeah, good question. So, so what, the, these are tax exempt bonds and so we're complying with IRS requirements. And part of the tax exempt nature of bonds, it's not, you know, it's not the end of the world, but there, there's a arbitrage calculation that needs to happen relative to how much interest was generated and earned regard, in, in relationship to, to, so your earnings versus what you pay out. So we're, we're paying out at a two per, two and a half percent interest rate, which is, is good and we're not earning anywhere near that. So the earnings piece wouldn't be a big issue. And as long as we're encumbered, we would be fine. But the IRS would look at it as hanging on to cash too long and not encumbering or expending it as tax exempt dollars. So I, I think that in, in the true IRS nature, there'd be penalties that would go along with those, with, with that.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Again, this is information only, but any public comment on this item? Seeing none, then we move on to number four, which is Northwestern Energy No Cost Lease for Installation of Solar Panels. And the recommendation, recommendation from the administration is that the trustees authorize the superintendent to develop a no cost lease agreement with Northwestern Energy to facilitate installation of solar technology at Big Sky, Hellgate, Sentinel and Willard. And that we will have an opportunity to see the lease agreement at a subsequent meeting. And so Superintendent Thane, do you want to explain what this project is about? It seems pretty exciting.
It's very exciting. I would note that Steve Clausen from Northwestern Energy is here and he'll have an opportunity to address the trustees briefly in a moment. But we've been engaged for several months now in conversation with Northwestern Energy and the City of Missoula about a partnership for a solar pilot project in the community. And Northwestern Energy has dedicated some significant resources to three such pilot projects around the state. Several months ago, Steve called and wanted to begin some initial conversation about the possibility of MCPS being a partner in this project. And we've engaged in a number of subsequent meetings. There have been engineers engaged and we're tonight at a point where we're ready to begin publicly discussing the possibilities. And we have some slides I'll show you in a moment that give you some insight into what we're contemplating on each of the four high school sites locally. And Northwestern Energy is anxious to start putting together the engineering specifications and working through the zoning processes with the city to ensure that we can move forward. And this would be a five-year pilot project. And I think it aligns very well with not only sustainability initiatives in Missoula, but with our desire to be a good community partner and to look into alternative energy generation. So maybe with that, I'll give Steve a chance to come forward and say a few things and I'll step to the display and we'll show you some pictures.
Thanks, Mark. Again, my name is Steve Clausen. I'm the Community Relationships Manager for Northwestern Energy here in Missoula. And this is a project we've been working on for a while with Mark and Pat. And I'm really here to thank them and the rest of their team for the work they put in over the last few months to get this put together, along with the rest of the community stakeholders that were involved in this process. So we're very excited about the opportunity that, for things that we're going to get to learn as a company and for things that are going to get, be a learning in the schools and for things that will be a learning for people in the community about solar energy and renewable resources. So we see this as a very exciting project and are really excited to continue to push this forward with Mark and Pat and the rest of those that have been involved in the process. So that's all my, my comments. And Mark, thank you for the invitation to come and speak tonight.
So what's displayed right now on the monitor is what's contemplated for Sentinel High School. And essentially, the pilot project is to study what may or may not be viable as a solar application in the community. So as you look at the various projects, they'll be innovative, they'll be utilizing different solar technology on the different sites and the arrays will be arranged very differently from one another. So the wall that you're seeing right now is the south facing wall of the new gym at Sentinel High School and that area is fenced off right now. The intent would be to deploy a solar array along that wall. Early discussions were about whether or not we would anchor it into the wall, but because of the structural integrity, it was felt that it might be more appropriate just to simply construct a grid system for that solar technology to be incorporated at Sentinel. You can see the blow up shows the thin film technology that would be considered as a potential use on this site. My challenge here is going to be to navigate slide to slide because I, I don't have a display on my monitor. So Willard is really an interesting study and there are really two different options here. So one option is to actually construct a solar fence along Crosby. And I'll show you a blow up display of that momentarily. A second is to do a collection of solar panels that would essentially be a shade feature or a cover for bicycles. And you can see in the insert, the same concept, but shading parking in the area. And again, looking at Willard, knowing that it's under construction, we would need to integrate our work with what the design team is working on now. But as we talked about a solar fence, we were talking about utilizing solar shingles. And you can see essentially the display here is a mesh fence with alternating panels that would include solar shingles. And although it would be oriented along Crosby, it wouldn't get the normal full southern exposure. And there was a lot of conversation about that. But the reality is if we're looking to pilot and determine viability of alternate energy generation in Missoula, we want to look at applications that may not be the most efficient applications, but would be a true test of whether or not they are viable and would have a return on investment in the community. So this would utilize a solar shingle technology in order to create those alternating panels on the fence line. I'll skip that slide. Then the discussion about covers for bike racks show a variety of different applications here. And these again are just models and we haven't landed on what might specifically be considered for the Willard site. But it provides us again, another opportunity to have essentially a multifunctional array, both the generation of solar power and also the shade feature for the bicycles or the covers for the bicycles. The next picture is Big Sky High School and this would be South Avenue, the Fort Missoula Regional Park. The array would be along that southern exposure. There's a sidewalk presently. This is a practice field that's used for football and soccer. The baseball diamond is, or softball diamond, I guess, is down in that area. And some of the more recent conversations we've had actually have been potentially moving that over toward the sidewalk and using it as a cover feature on that sidewalk. That wall at Big Sky High School, the southern exposure is largely brick, but it has some high windows. So we make sure that the solar arrays are not deployed at such a height that they would interfere with any of the windows. And potentially moving it out toward the sidewalk preserves those trees and also provides cover on the sidewalk area so that fans that might be attending events there would have some protection from the elements when it rains or snows. Oops, sorry, I keep going to the wrong button there. This picture shows essentially that at Big Sky, one of the additional elements located over in that area would be the potential for some storage, some batteries, so that we could actually store on-site energy. And as Steve mentioned in his comments, part of our initiative is to make sure that we take full advantage of the educational opportunities that the pilot project presents. So we could have, say, sporting events either on the stadium or in the gym or the cafeteria. We could have activities where essentially we could monitor how much energy is consumed in production of those events and how much is generated by the solar and essentially tell the community that's participating in those activities whether or not that is solely being covered essentially by the same amount of energy that's being generated by the solar panels on-site. The final one is one that's presented probably the greatest challenge for us. This is a picture of the Hellgate High School site. And we originally had some conversation about rooftop applications. Part of the building has recently been re-roofed. This is a lower roof than others, but we were worried about structural integrity, about access to the panels. Ultimately, we decided to look at an area that's to the north of the school, which sounds a little bit odd because we always want southern exposure on the solar panels. But what's contemplated is to put the solar panels again on a grid system similar to what's displayed at Sentinel, but put it on the borderline of the property between the Hellgate parking lot and the church parking lot. And those panels would be exposed in a southerly direction. They've done some modeling with the shading from the building and feel that it would not impact the solar panels. Part of the intent is to make sure that these are actually highly visible. We want the community to be aware. We want the students to be aware. And we would include in each of the buildings essentially a data dashboard where we could in essentially real time monitor how much energy is being produced, but also how much energy is being consumed by the building. There I think is a bit of a misperception that you put an array of solar panels out like this and you generate enough energy to power a school. And that's simply not the case. So the instructional component I think is going to be huge. We also know that again, we're not looking for perfect applications, but we're just looking for test sites. We also hope to incorporate some lessons, potentially bring some science and math teachers together and help them through professional development to develop lessons and activities around alternative energy generation and around the solar panels. There's also been discussion of smaller arrays that the students would have an opportunity to alter the angles, et cetera, so that they could monitor how efficient they are and how much energy is generated. My disclaimer again, and I know Steve would verify this, is that none of this has gone yet through zoning, Board of Adjustments. We have some new fencing ordinances in Missoula, but the city's been engaged in the conversation with us the whole time. So we're hopeful that we could certainly navigate that process in a relatively seamless fashion. But again, I think this is a great opportunity for us as a community and for us as a school system to capitalize on the educational components of alternative energy generation and to see if there are some applications that would be appropriate in school settings. We're looking at this as a five-year pilot study and the, as we draw toward the close of the five years, we'll enter into conversations about whether to extend it or how the terms might change. At this point in time, we would be looking to have conversation with Northwestern Energy about a no cost lease essentially of the property so that this could be constructed on our site.
Are there any questions for Steve or Superintendent Thane? Any comments? This is again, information only, or no, never mind. This is something we get to talk about. So any questions first and then I'll entertain a motion that the trustees authorize the superintendent to develop a no cost lease agreement with Northwestern Energy to facilitate the installation of solar technology at Big Sky, Hellgate, Sentinel and Willard with the understanding that the lease agreement would be presented to the trustees for final approval at a subsequent meeting. Moved by trustee Dugger, is there's, oh.
Question.
Okay, a question. Comments come after there's a motion, questions come before.
So questions first. So I guess the main question for me is on the short term, the, the needs of the, of the system get served very well because of the, the access to education for the students around solar energy. But I guess my, my question is, is more of a broad, long-term question and that is what is the, the ultimate goal of the power company here? Is it to develop a new way for them to generate income or is it to help the school system become less dependent on pay for power ultimately?
I think Steve may have some comments too. I really believe that our interest in this is finding out whether or not there are applications that would be suitable in a variety of settings like those that we're, we would be experimenting with. We at this point in time have had a variety of conversations about where those energy credits could possibly go and Steve may have some further comment on that, but that has been a source of significant conversation in our meetings.
We look at this as a, as a real learning for the company. We did a, a solar project in Bozeman on their wastewater treatment plant. This is our Missoula project and we have a project on deck in twenty eighteen in Helena. All three of them are very different, but we're using them as a tool to learn about this type of technology and application as it relates to the grid. And this was an opportunity to do that and work with the schools and the community to try to develop a pilot project that would allow us to do that, but also allow the school to benefit from that as well as the members of the community. So that's the, the goal of the company is this is we're going to learn from the data just like the students are. And that's really the goal of the project.
Okay, my husband's going to cringe if he hears me ask this question because he's a master electrician. But briefly, how does the solar panel work? I mean, what?
Briefly?
Well, I mean, I mean, it's like, so does the sun shine down on it? Is the wires that go under the ground to bring, I mean, how, you know, what?
You know, we, we, as Mark mentioned, we think that some of the applications we will, we will, we will have set up in a way that we can move them and adjust them. And, and that's something we see as an opportunity, not just for us, but for the students, to mess with the data, change the angle of it, that type of stuff and, and use it as a learning. But they're, you know, they're not very mobile. And so a lot of times when they're positioned in a certain area within, you know, we can move them up and down some and we can change the angle, but you know, they're not something we can pick up and move around.
Well, so, but, but what I, I guess what I'm asking is that, so are we looking at the sun hitting it and giving heat to the building that it's like?
Yeah, the, the energy from the sun that's hitting it is, energy generated can be used to heat the building or cool the building or put energy into the battery storage, which Mark talked about, which could be used to light the gymnasium, for example, which is one thing we talked about. So that energy can be dispensed a lot of different ways, but yeah, that's basic concept, concept you've got us right.
Okay, thanks.
Is there some signage contemplated that would explain what's going on with these solar panels? Because in conjunction with a lot of the upgrades that are going on, I think it could be pretty easy for people to get the idea that we're now powering our buildings with solar, which is not actually what's happening, which is fine. And I think that the learning process is, is, this is an important and a really cool opportunity. But we're not actually like now going solar at the schools. But I, I, so I think some really thoughtful signage will help people understand kind of what is and isn't happening at the buildings.
I would say that the communication piece that we work on together with the community in particular is going to be a critical part of this. You know, we want everybody involved and everybody to be involved with what we're doing here, not just the schools, but the communities as well. We want kids engaged with their parents and parents engaged with this type of technology. And so we see those as real advantages, but you're right on. The communication piece all the way through this process and ongoing is critical as we've talked about that.
Yeah, I would just add that one of the elements that I didn't discuss is that there, the city would really like to see an informational kiosk powered by solar power that talks about the pilot project and whether that's located in Caris Park or someplace where it has high visibility. But to do that, public information piece is one of the elements that's been discussed fairly extensively.
So at this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I should have allowed you to sit down. Not allowed you, but I'm not sure where it is. So is there a motion to authorize Superintendent Thane and the administration to develop a no cost lease agreement with Northwestern Energy to facilitate the installation of solar technology at Big Sky, Hellgate, Sentinel and Willard with the understanding the lease agreement will be presented to us for final approval, approval at a later meeting? Moved by trustee Wake and seconded by trustee McDonald and trustee Dugger. And so is there any board discussion?
Marsha, could you repeat?
Sure. It was moved by trustee Wake and there's kind of a double second at this very same hand by McDonald and Dugger.
Thank you.
Northwest Energy doesn't go up to Seeley Lake, is that correct?
Well, I don't know exactly what they do in that area, but this is designated for Missoula specifically. So it was a community solar project with the City of Missoula being the point of emphasis.
Yeah, we don't go up that far with service, and so the pilots we, that we're doing, we, obviously, we're doing them in our service area. Some of you may have seen that we have a very small rural one over by back hill by Deer Lodge. It's right by the highway. That's a project we put together to try and figure out how to keep energy going out to rural areas when there's only one line. And so it's a storage area, and that's just another smaller pilot we're working on as an example.
Well, I just felt that the question could arise, so I wanted to have a clarification, and you did very fine. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks. I think there's a lot of really, really cool opportunities here, and the more that kids have the opportunity to learn about sustainable technology, the better. So I think that's really exciting. I would just want to make sure that if any other companies that were sort of playing in the alternative energy space were interested in similar types of pilots and similar types of opportunities, that, you know, other companies that do things like solar, wind, or microgrid stuff, I've now used all of my technology language, but other companies may have an interest in partnering as well and would hopefully have that same type of opportunity.
And I would just respond by saying, again, as I said in my initial comments, this aligns very well with the goals that we've established. And we've been in conversation with the sustainability people at the city because there's a zero-waste initiative, and we want to partner and align in that process also. So I would assume that if other players came to the table that had similar interests that aligned to our goals and objectives, we would certainly want to enter into conversation.
Any other trustee comments? Okay.
So I, too, see the benefits to this. I think it's an incredible way for the kids to learn about the next generation of energy. I'm also hopeful that your results are going to be promising, too. I live off the grid myself, so I've had three years of getting into this idea and how it works and how advanced the panels are these days and how efficient they are. I have a 2,800-square-foot home, and I spend six months out of the year, $38 a month out of my pocket for energy. The rest of it is free. So I know when you plan, you know, what I think you'll find is, there's, of course, a lot more benefit to it when you plan into the design from the outset, but you learn how to do that from what you're doing now, you know? So I think this is going to be very promising, and I'll take a strong interest in it myself because I'm very supportive to everybody getting, you know, into this technology as quickly as they can. And there are a lot of players, by the way, in the community. I don't know how interested they are, you know, in this, but there are a number, so.
Any other board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of authorizing the superintendent to develop a no-cost lease agreement with Northwestern Energy under the terms we just discussed, indicate by raising your hand. And that unanimous as to all trustees present? Thank you. Let me move on to item number B1, which is to approve revisions of the early learning program calendar. And although it says "just action" because it impacts only those in the elementary district, it would be elementary trustees only. So the recommendation is that the trustees approve the revision to the early learning program calendar. Is, and I think this might be the last of the, is this the last of the school calendars?
Yeah, this calendar had previously been approved, and what happened is the Jefferson staff, and looking at the changeover with the Franklin School opening up and the transition of those students required some additional time with the start, we're not under any constraints with the state or OPI regarding our calendar, so this modification to, the opening date to September 11th won't cause any effect.
Any questions of Dave about that explanation for the modification? Seeing none, then is there a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the revision of the early learning program calendar? Moved by trustee Lorenzen and seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of approving the revision to the early learning program calendar for next, this next academic year, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to the four elementary trustees present, and that is a quorum. And then we'll switch number nine and number 10, because number 10 is not in executive session, so we'll take, we'll deal with the grievance hearing before we take final public comment. And so just a bit of procedural background. As I indicated, in an abundance of caution, the administrative staff have listed it as an executive session item, but that requires me as the board chair to make a determination that there is an issue of privacy that outweighs the public's right to know, and since the nature of the appeal which is found, or the appeal from the grievance is found on page 38 and 39 of the packets that were handed out at the beginning of the meeting, which has to do with whether a grievance was timely filed and whether or not three contract provisions, 610, 92F, and 94 were violated. It doesn't raise any privacy issues that I can see it happens. It has to do with whether there's a contractual obligation on the part of the district to pay a certain amount of money. And so we'll go ahead with this, and as the trustees are aware, the document, just to explain these documents, they were put together by the staff. I probably would have ordered them in a different fashion, but they were ordered for me when I got back from Alaska. So 38 and 39 contain the grievance form that's been filed that is now before the board. And as you can see, there has been an indication, indicated that the grievant, Mike Magstad, wanted to take it to the next step on page 38. And then the designee of the superintendent, Dave Roth, issued a decision which is one of the attachments on 5-1, and he indicated he wanted to refer the decision to the next step of the grievance process, which is to bring it to the board as a review board, or in other terms, legal terms, an appellate board. And then level three requires that the Board of Trustees issue a decision in the matter. So those are the two documents. And then the attachments indicate the responses that Mr. Magstad has gotten, both at, to the immediate response was from Mr. McWilliams, and that's the first attachment. And the second attachment is from Dave Roth as the superintendent's designee. And so if you turn back to page 38, what the decision before the board is whether or not, since we sit as an appeals or review board, is whether or not the district's determination that the grievance was not filed in a timely fashion was a correct decision, and whether or not the contract provisions, the allegation that there were three contract provisions violated, which the administration found they were not violated, that were, was, were not correct. And so the person presenting the grievance has a representative, Mr. Severson here, and so he has an opportunity to identify, or present an argument to us as a review board as to whether or not the grievant, Mr. Magstad, has met his burden of proving either as a matter of law that the grievance was filed in a timely fashion, or by a preponderance of the evidence that the administration was incorrect in determining that there was no contract provision, the three identified ones were violated. And so as we've done in past hearings of this nature, Mr. Severson will have an opportunity to present his arguments. Generally, we've been suggesting 15 minutes. You don't have to use it all. And then if you want to reserve some time at the end, say five, three to five, or even seven minutes, I'll keep track of time for any rebuttal responses, since you're the moving party, so to speak, in this appeal. You'll have a chance to respond after Mr. Roth has presented the administration's response to your arguments, and he will not have a rebuttal to your rebuttal. He will just get his 15 minutes, and he won't get to say anything else. So you have 15 minutes, and I'll just...
Well, I'm so sorry. I was out in the hall discussing this with Dave, and so I didn't want to interrupt your introduction, but I may make the board very pleased with this request. I'd like to ask for a reschedule or continuance of this hearing because due to travel and some miscommunications, I'm prepared for a very different structure hearing than what you described.
Okay.
And I want to be prepared. I would love to do it tonight. I have my packet. I've got everything ready. I was discussing with Dave out in the hall, and so I didn't get to catch you before you started the meeting.
Oh, okay.
So if it would be appropriate, could we reschedule for another?
Yep. That actually helps us out, because then we can appropriately notice it up as a non-executive session item, so...
Yeah, that's one other ancillary issue, too.
Yeah, that's another aspect which is a good reason for continuing it, too.
And the board will be pleased because we're almost done then.
Okay.
It's not going to be another hour.
And so you can let me and Superintendent Thane know whether the next regular scheduled meeting would work, because as we just discussed, we'll be canceling the second one.
That's right.
And then there'll be probably some budget discussions in August to meet up with that special meeting. So if the next regular board meeting works, that I think that would work with all this...
Yeah, I don't want to mess up your August stuff, so.
Okay.
I'll work with Dave.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Well, thank you for informing us of that. And so with that, then, the matter's been continued to a mutually acceptable date in the future. So then we move on to now what is item number 10, which is public comment on any non-agenda item from anyone in the public. One last opportunity at the beginning and end of every meeting. And seeing none, then we're adjourned, and thank you all for being here.